Prescott Valley Study Session, November 6, 2025. Call to Order, Clerk, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Keel.
Present.
Councilmember Freund.
Here.
Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Zercher.
Here.
Mayor Palguda.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. First item up, large animal shelter and emergency readiness. Sir, you want to kick us off?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. You reported the evacuation. I don't know if you're right. There you go.
All right, start again. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. A big part of evacuations is the animals and the pets that someone might evacuate with. For normal household evacuations, there are usually places made or facilities that allow for household pets, dogs, cats, things like that. When it comes to larger animals, chickens, goats, horses, there's a gap that's been filled. And that gap has been filled by the large animal, just slipped my mind, Large Animal Shelter Emergency Readiness System, also known as LASER. With that, we have Kathy here to present about LASER and what they do for our county. I don't want to steal too much of her thunder, so I'll let her get started.
Thank you. Welcome, ma'am.
Which button do I push? Just the top?
The right arrow.
The right arrow. Thank you. Thank you for this time. I appreciate it. Mayor, Town Council, we were here a few years ago to tell you about the resources available for your community, but several positions have changed since then. We wanted to make sure that you knew about us. So wildfire is the most significant threat in Yavapai County. I probably don't have to tell you that. We all love our animals. We would not leave them behind. But keep in mind, this discussion is not just about the animals. This is about our neighbors. This is about protecting the people who love those animals. With a plan in place, they will evacuate quickly instead of turning them loose or staying back with them. The 2017 Goodwin Fire was our call to action. If you were here then, you will remember, over 7,000 people were evacuated, over 200 barn animals needed sheltering. LASER wasn't born yet, but a lot of us same people hastily put a shelter together at what is now Wheelhouse Sports. It was owned by the county at the time. We were putting up stalls as horses and people were arriving. It was chaotic. We realized we needed better organization. So since 2019, when LASER started, we have been activated actually 12 times now by the county and on standby another 12, and each one has been for wildfire. So our mission is twofold. We provide safe shelter for the barn animals year-round, and we prepare, we help our communities prepare for emergencies. This is our organizational structure. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We serve the private households of Yavapai County. We can explore sheltering agreements with other nonprofits, for instance, Horses with Heart in Chino Valley. We have an MOU with them. They have to provide their own feed. We work in partnership with the county emergency management office. The Board of Supervisors has been very supportive, our local businesses, and our neighbors. We operate with a strategic plan, fundraising. We have a financial controller and an outreach committee and a financial review. We have about 65 volunteers on the roster right now. These are the animals we shelter. We are the destination. We do not shelter exotics or herds of cattle, but we might be able to accommodate one or two backyard four-age steers. Animals can be transported to our shelter by their owners, by Triple E, which is Emergency Equine Evacuation, another nonprofit, or by friends and neighbors. There's no charge to the public for these services. So the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors has provided a dedicated shelter site here in Prescott Valley, just off of Highway 89A, right by Wheelhouse Sports. There are 190 covered stalls through an MOU with the county. LASER operates that shelter during activations. With donations from our community and grant funds, particularly the Arizona Community Foundation, we now have a shed onsite, fully stocked and ready to go. So if the disaster encroaches on that primary site, we have a backup shelter in Chino Valley. This is at the Chino Valley Equestrian Park off of Perkinsville Road. We partner with the town of Chino Valley. They own the land. We have an agreement with the Chino Valley Equestrian Association that runs the park there. Again, we raised nearly $40,000 to build these stalls and have a fully supplied shed onsite. So the activation process, people always ask, we're connected to the county EOC, receiving immediate notice of any potential disaster. If an incident looks like it's going to threaten human or property, then emergency management alerts us. Immediately, our LASER volunteers are notified, asking about their availability. The shelter is set up by our quick response team. So before the gates are even open, we have people out there setting up water buckets, pulling out hoses, checking the stalls for safety and usability. We can be ready in one hour. At the direction of the county, we open the gates. Typically, it's during a go order. Sometimes it could be sooner. The location is available and posted on our website and announced by the Public Information Officer. We're open 24 hours. We staff it 24 hours a day until that evacuation is lifted, and then owners have 24 hours to come get their animals. Our volunteers go through a county background check and then LASER training program, to whatever level is comfortable for them. We have our quick response team, as I mentioned. They get the shelter ready. We have greeters, the ones in the orange vest, who start the paperwork as the trucks line up. They will then pass it on to the people in the yellow vest, our intake teams, who complete the documentation and accompany the vehicle to the stall. Our feeding and cleaning crew is there several times a day, and our shelter manager is the one who oversees all the operations at the shelter, makes onsite decisions, assigns stalls as animals come in, and communicates with the EOC. Our non-shelter volunteers can help us with fundraising and community outreach, and we require our volunteers to recertify each year. We document all the information we need about owners and animals. We require a hold harmless agreement to be signed and a medical authorization. Shelter managers maintain an activity log, and they brief the next shift as they come on. If an animal needs vet care while at our shelter, we call the owner first. Can't get the owner, we call their vet. Can't get their vet, we call Prescott Animal Hospital. They are on call. Owners can come and visit their animals anytime that they're there, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and get them out for exercise if it's an extended stay. They feed supplements, and they're welcome to come visit their animals at any time. But outside visitors, excuse me, are not allowed. We feed Bermuda and alfalfa hay. We do not give the supplements or medications, but the owner is free to do that. We do continual wellness checks, and we document any concerns with a watch list. We're empowered entirely by our community. These are the folks who help us with our shelter, supplying hay, vet care, donors and grantors, and our dedicated volunteers. We can't do it without them. So as I mentioned, emergency readiness is the second part of our mission. We encourage creating defensible space. We make presentations in neighborhoods and to social organizations. We encourage people to register for emergency alerts, to know their genesis zone, to prepare an animal go kit, to create a neighborhood plan, to teach their animals to load in a trailer quickly, even during stressful times. We collaborate with many organizations. Our president is on the board of the State Volunteer Organizations Act of Disaster. We are in constant contact with the Arizona Department of Agriculture. We attend an annual summit in California. They know how to do this. They've had plenty of experience, and they share that with us, and so we share our experience with them, too. Other counties have reached out to us, and we are willing to share our model with them. We're the only structured volunteer organization of our type in the state of Arizona. We're pretty proud of the fact we won the Governor's Award for Disaster Response last year. We got to go down to Phoenix and meet the Governor. We know you share our vision. Every animal should have a safe haven in disasters. Please take a moment to watch this video.
It's good to note that all of our volunteers, we have 65 trained volunteers at LASER. All of them volunteer their time, the greeters, fill out the preliminary paperwork until they're passed on to the intake coordinator, who will then go with them until their animals are housed. There's a shelter manager. That person coordinates where everyone's going to get placed. Today, we've got a whole lineup of vehicles, so it's like everybody got evacuated at the same time. It doesn't usually work that way, but this is good because then forces you to be ready for that moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilman?
It sounds like a wonderful program, and it seems like it's very well thought out. I just have one very small thought about this. What happens, for example, during an emergency, say, a fire? If the animal's owner has a heart attack or takes ill or is burned during the emergency and is unable to pick it up in the 24-hour time that you have at the end? Do you have a plan for that?
We will make our best efforts to try to reach that person. We also get the name and number of a backup person, you know, a spouse or a neighbor or a friend, and we can try to reach out to them. We can always make arrangements to house the animal, possibly at the Yavapai Humane Society's equine division temporarily until we can make arrangements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was able to attend the open house you had just recently, too. And it was so impressive to see the amount of people that are willing to volunteer their time was amazing as well, but the whole setup, it's so professionally done. It was very, very impressive. One of the things that touched my heart so much is sometimes people will have two or three horses, and the girl that was giving me the tour mentioned that you will have them go across from each other so that they can still stay in touch with their own families, their mates, or, you know, you house them individually for their own safety, but to see that they can see their siblings or whatever, I just thought that was such a nice little added touch because, you know, you do raise your animals together, and then if you separate them, that right there is an anxiety-provoking thing. So you guys have thought everything through, from the management of coming in and exiting, and the way that the horse trailers were coming through, and just, it was very impressive. So I just want to say thank you for all your efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am, for your efforts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, Item 2B, Glassford Dells Regional Park Conceptual Master Plan. Bobby?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Item before you tonight is the Glassford Dells Conceptual Master Plan. This item was previously discussed at the April 30th.
Disaster encroaches on that primary site, we have a backup shelter in Chino Valley. This is at the Chino Valley Equestrian Park off of Perkinsville Road. We partner with the town of Chino Valley, they own the land. We have an agreement with the Chino Valley Equestrian Association that runs the park there. Again, we raised nearly $40,000 to build these stalls and have a fully supplied shed onsite. So, the activation process, people always ask. We're connected to the county EOC, receiving immediate notice of any potential disaster. If an incident looks like it's going to threaten human or property, then emergency management alerts us. Immediately, our laser volunteers are notified, asking about their availability. The shelter is set up by our quick response team. So before the gates are even open, we have people out there setting up water buckets, pulling out hoses, checking the stalls for safety and usability. We can be ready in one hour. At the direction of the county, we open the gates. Typically, it's during a go order, sometimes it could be sooner. The location is available and posted on our website and announced by the public information officer. We're open 24 hours, we staff it 24 hours a day until that evacuation is lifted and then owners have 24 hours to come get their animals. Our volunteers go through a county background check and then laser training program, to whatever level is comfortable for them. We have our quick response team, as I mentioned, they get the shelter ready. We have greeters, the ones in the orange vest, who start the paperwork as the trucks line up. They will then pass it on to the people in the yellow vest, our intake teams, who complete the documentation and accompany the vehicle to the stall. Our feeding and cleaning crew is there several times a day. And our shelter managers, the one who oversees all the operations at the shelter, makes onsite decisions, assigns stalls as animals come in, and communicates with the EOC. Our non-shelter volunteers can help us with fundraising and community outreach. And we require our volunteers to recertify each year. We document all the information we need about owners and animals. We require a hold harmless agreement to be signed and a medical authorization. Shelter managers maintain an activity log and they brief the next shift as they come on. If an animal needs vet care while at our shelter, we call the owner first. Can't get the owner, we call their vet. Can't get their vet, we call Prescott Animal Hospital, they are on call. Owners can come and visit their animals anytime that they're there, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and get them out for exercise if it's an extended stay. They feed supplements and they're welcome to come visit their animals at any time. But outside visitors, excuse me, are not allowed. We feed Bermuda and alfalfa hay. We do not give the supplements or medications, but the owner is free to do that. We do continual wellness checks and we document any concerns with a watch list. We're empowered entirely by our community. These are the folks who help us with our shelter, supplying hay, vet care, donors and grantors, and our dedicated volunteers. We can't do it without them. So, as I mentioned, emergency readiness is the second part of our mission. We encourage creating defensible space, we make presentations in neighborhoods and to social organizations. We encourage people to register for emergency alerts, to know their genesis zone, to prepare an animal go kit, to create a neighborhood plan, to teach their animals to load in a trailer quickly, even during stressful times. We collaborate with many organizations. Our president is on the board of the State Volunteer Organizations Act of Disaster. We are in constant contact with the Arizona Department of Agriculture. We attend an annual summit in California. They know how to do this, they've had plenty of experience and they share that with us. And so, we share our experience with them too. Other counties have reached out to us and we are willing to share our model with them. We're the only structured volunteer organization of our type in the state of Arizona. We're pretty proud of the fact we won the governor's award for disaster response last year. We got to go down to Phoenix and meet the governor. We know you share our vision. Every animal should have a safe haven in disasters. Please take a moment to watch this video.
It's good to note that all of our volunteers, we have 65 trained volunteers at laser. All of them volunteer their time, the greeters, fill out the preliminary paperwork until they're passed on to the intake coordinator, who will then go with them until their animals are housed. There's a shelter manager, that person coordinates where everyone's going to get placed. Today, we've got a whole lineup of vehicles, so it's like everybody got evacuated at the same time. It doesn't usually work that way, but this is good because then forces you to be ready for that moment.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, you have any questions or comments? Counselor?
It sounds like a wonderful program and it seems like it's very well thought out. I just have one very small thought about this. What happens, for example, during an emergency, say a fire? If the animal's owner has a heart attack or takes ill or is burned during the emergency and is unable to pick it up in the 24-hour time that you have at the end, what, do you have a plan for that?
We will make our best efforts to try to reach that person. We also get the name and number of a backup person, you know, a spouse or a neighbor or a friend, and we can try to reach out to them. We can always make arrangements to house the animal, possibly at the Yavapai Humane Society's equine division temporarily, until we can make arrangements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was able to attend the open house you had just recently too.
Thank you.
And it was so impressive to see the amount of people that are willing to volunteer their time was amazing as well. But the whole setup, it's so professionally done, it was very, very impressive. One of the things that touched my heart so much is sometimes people will have two or three horses. And the girl that was giving me the tour mentioned that you will have them go across from each other so that they can still stay in touch with their own families, their mates or, you know, you house them individually for their own safety, but to see that they can see their siblings or whatever. I just thought that was such a nice little added touch because, you know, you do raise your animals together and then if you separate them, that right there is an anxiety provoking thing. So, you guys have thought everything through from the management of coming in and exiting and the way that the horse trailers were coming through and just, it was very impressive.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say thank you for all your efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am, for your efforts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, item 2B, Glassford Dells Regional Park Conceptual Master Plan. Bobby?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, item before you tonight is the Glassford Dells Conceptual Master Plan. This item was previously discussed at the April 3rd council study session, where refined concepts for the project were reviewed. Since that time, additional supplemental visual aids were developed for both pump track and the ropes course to give the community and the council a little better feel for what the vision may be. An open house was then conducted at the end of April, providing another opportunity for the community to look into the project, ask questions and see what we're working on. And then, a statistically valid survey was conducted between June and July, receiving nearly 1,900 responses over the course of this year, indicating strong community interest and participation. Based on this additional input, additional conceptual illustrative renderings were completed by our partner, the Planning Center. And they show the overall park design and that's what we'll be reviewing today. We have the Planning Center with us today, Brian and Daniel, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to them for them to walk us through the latest concepts and findings on the project.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, gentlemen.
Great, thank you, thank you Bobby. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, glad to be here today. So, my name is Daniel Bradshaw, I'm a principal landscape architect for the Planning Center. My colleague is Brian Underwood, a principal planner. What I'm going to do here is just kind of set the stage here and then turn the time over to Brian to talk about really kind of what I think is probably the most important conversation here today. But I want to reiterate that what we proposed, or presented, I should say, at last April session, were conceptual plans based on feedback that we had received through open houses, stakeholder visits or meetings and surveys. And those concepts were intended to reflect the feedback and establish a vision that could carry this project forward. I'm not going to take much time to review these slides here today because they were presented in April, they've been a part of the open house since then and the statistically valid survey, but I'm going to touch on them just briefly to set the stage. What we're looking at here is the overall gateway concept master plan. If you'll notice, that north is actually pointed to the right side of the image there, so everything's on its side there. And you can see Jasper Parkway at the bottom of the image. But this here is intended primarily to represent the location of amenity areas, the south gate on the left-hand side of the screen, which would serve as a trailhead and parking area, the east gate, which is actually at the bottom of the screen there, which would be the primary hub for activity in the area there, including potential playgrounds, splash pad, community garden, dog park and the like. Other amenity areas would include a summit viewing area, a passive area at the top of Glassford Hill that would provide an opportunity for individuals to view the surrounding area and potentially look at interpretive signage or have a picnic. And then, obviously trails throughout this site that would connect to existing and proposed trails offsite as well, so that it really provides some great connectivity through the region. So, this next slide here represents the east gate here. Once again, this was presented last April, but it depicts a variety of park amenities and uses that have been proposed for this site here. Obviously, as Brian gets up to talk about the survey, he's going to talk about how this park reflects the information that we gathered through that survey as well and ultimately whether that survey indicated whether or not this park to some degree represents the overall vision of the broad community. But you see here, obviously, some of the main elements would include potentially a gateway ropes course, a pump track, splash pad, playground, dog park and the like. Here, we have a depiction of a disc golf course, this is a schematic depiction here. Obviously, at this point, we don't have a design team that's engineering this site. Everything we're doing is for the purposes of creating a vision. But this here gives you an idea for what 18 holes could look like within about 40 acres throughout the east gate. As we move to this next slide here, we can see the proposal for a potential watering hole for wildlife that would sit just to the east of the existing water tanks and west of the main body of the east gateway. This image here depicts more of that passive viewing area from the summit. Once again, maybe there's an opportunity for some picnic ramadas, interpretive signage and some group space for small gatherings, classes, boy scout groups and the like. And this image here represents the south gate, which would be that trailhead with parking, some picnic areas and restrooms. And with that, I'm going to turn some time over to Brian to talk about what's happened since this was last presented in April.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Daniel. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, my name is Brian Underwood and I'm going to walk you through a little bit of what we've done since we were last in front of you at the beginning of April. So, at the end of that month, we actually had an open house with probably about 100 members of the community that showed up for that. And overwhelmingly, we got a majority of positive feedback at that meeting. But one of the things that was really emphasized was, you know, that concern about where these amenities are being proposed and limiting the footprint of Glassford Dells, ensuring that, you know, it continues to be an open space, a preserve, something that, you know, we can continue to cherish from a scenic standpoint, right? And so, really what we did is we showed those rendered conceptual drawings that Daniel just walked you through. We had those blown up onto large boards and walked folks through that during the open house. And then, following that, we put together a last of three statistical, you know, this one was a statistically valid survey, the last of a series of three of them. And really what we were trying to do is to garner feedback on, are these the types of amenities that people want to see? And more, most importantly, are these things that people are going to use, right? And so, perhaps, you know, we got some strong indications that people are, you know, very on board with certain things, but if you go out there and you build those things, are you sure that people are actually going to go out and use it? And so, as we get into this, I'll just give you an idea of kind of what the existing usage of Glassford Hill looks like. And so, that exhibit there or that graph, that pie chart on the left side, that is the current usage of Glassford Hill. And as you can see, you know, about half of the population or about, we had 1,900 or so responses to that survey, about half of those respondents said they've never been to Glassford Hill, they've never, ever been there once. And so, nearly the other half, 46%, have only been there or only go to it one to five times a year. So, handful of times throughout the year versus with the things that we're proposing in Glassford Dells, you can see that frequency really jumps up on the right-hand side of the pie chart there. And so, instead of half of the population not ever going to Glassford Dells, you end up with only about 15% that said, you know, maybe it still wouldn't be for me. But then you start looking at, you know, one to three times per month, that's a third of the respondents, a massive jump from what's currently occurring out there. So, that was positive feedback. This was also very positive feedback. So, this is giving us a kind of an overview of what people's, not necessarily their top priorities, we'll get into that on some subsequent slides, but this really drills down into what's most likely to be used. So, this was actually a question that came later in the survey, after folks had already determined or selected their most important amenities, so their top four or five amenities. And then, out of those, we asked them, so, the things that you've selected here, what are you most likely to use and use the most? And so, these were the responses. And as you can see, kind of across the board, in each of those three areas, the summit, the south gateway and the east gateway, it's more of those passive, you know, trail amenities, you know, shaded picnic areas and benches, farmer's market pavilion down in the east gateway. So, I think, you know, this is a strong indication that people want to see more trails, they want to see more connectivity and they're open to some of that happening here at Glassford Dells. So, diving a little bit further into the individual areas here, so this is the summit viewing area up at the top, an overall 62% approval rating for this area. And as you can see there, you know, as I mentioned, the actual preference or the importance of these amenities, you can see in that infographic on the left there, where the hillside trails, the shaded picnic areas, all of, you know, those amenities are 50% of respondents saying that that was important to them, that they wanted to see that here in Glassford Dells. And what we did is we broke that out as well because we wanted to look at, you know, the segment of the population, you know, that has family, you know. So, those households that, you know, have school-aged children, what do they think? You know, what kinds of things are they seeking in Prescott Valley that perhaps they're going elsewhere, they're going to Prescott because they're not getting those amenities here? And so, ultimately, you know, we saw, you know, a very strong preference for just about, you know, everything that we were proposing here in the summit view on both sides, for folks that had children in the household and those that didn't. Then, taking a look at the south gateway area, very similar, you know, strong preference for interconnected trails, shaded picnic areas, some additional amenities in this area. So, we had, you know, sort of the food truck area and interpretive signage also incorporated in here. And again, you can see strong preference for all of those amenities. And then, lastly, we'll end with the east gateway area here. And this area received overall 79% approval rating. Again, you see the shaded picnic areas and trails getting the lion's share of the vote there. But this one is the area, I think, where it's most striking between those households with and without children because you can see some of those other, those other park amenities over on the right-hand side, like the playground, the splash pad, the ropes course, the bicycle pump track. And you can see that those households that have kids in them, they're overwhelmingly saying, yes, we want these things, we need these things in our community for our kids to do. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Daniel for a moment to talk about the rendered perspectives here.
Sure, thank you, Brian. I'm Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. What we have here over the next few slides are some depictions to illustrate what these 2D concept illustrations that I showed at the beginning of the presentation would look like from kind of a 3D perspective. And so, we have some drone images here and we've overlaid on those drone images the locations of some of these amenities. So, you can kind of begin to see how they would sit in context with adjacent development and Glassford Hill itself. So, from this perspective here, which is, you know, towards the southeast of Glassford Hill, if you look at the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see the location of the south gateway. Once again, this would be the location for a small parking lot and a trailhead that would provide access for hiking and biking on the hill. If you look at the right side of the image there, you'll see the east gateway. Once again, this represents kind of the bulk of the active area of the park there at the base of the hill, adjacent to Jasper Parkway. The next slide here is a depiction of what that south gateway could look like. Once again, nothing's been designed or engineered, so this is just an illustration, but it depicts a parking lot, several small picnic ramadas, the restrooms and trailhead with access to existing trails and a proposal for future trails. And the vantage point for this particular drone image is just above the hobby lobby there looking towards the north. Okay, as we move towards the east of the site there and we look back towards the west, we're looking at the east gateway and how it sits at the base of the hill. Just to point out some context, on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see Jasper phases three and four. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the terrace apartments. Towards the center of the screen, you can see the existing water tank and really how this east gateway would sit kind of between those elements towards Jasper Parkway. And if we zoom in a little closer to the Parkway here, this is a rendered perspective or illustration that depicts what the space could look like. So, this once again is solely an illustration for purposes of kind of conveying an ultimate vision. But you can see the elements that were depicted in the 2D master plan or the rendered master plan now in 3D on the hillside here. So, you can see on the right-hand side of the image there, the ropes course, which would potentially be two levels, pump track adjacent to that. And then, as you move towards the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see playground, splash pad, pavilion, community garden, dog park. And in the far left-hand side of the screen, the disc golf course, which would remain a fairly natural, in a fairly natural state. Obviously, the kind of the parking lot that runs along the park here serves as kind of the backbone or spine for circulation for both cars and people and others to get to various points within this overall park. I think, what I hope is conveyed clearly here is that we anticipate that a park like this could be highly connected with paths, trails, to provide a variety of experiences for people that want to walk, maybe they have children on a stroller, there are surfaces for that, maybe they want to bike and so there are opportunities there. The idea being that this space would be a space that is multi-generational and that it caters to interests and abilities for all residents of the area here and would have activities that would cater to the interest, a diverse array of interests for community members here. The idea that this park is family-centric, right? With that, I'll turn the time back over to Brian to wrap up the presentation here today.
Thank you, Daniel. And yeah, as we've talked through this, you know, I want to emphasize one of the things that Daniel said there about, you know, this is a conceptual design, right? This is a jumping off point, a starting point, a roadmap really for you all. And that's really what takes us to this next step slide is that this is not, you know, exactly what will be built at Glassford Dells. This is to give you all an idea of what that vision, the vision that we heard from the majority of the community that was validated through surveys and to put that into a real-world perspective so that people can understand that this will still sit, you know, more than 1,000 feet lower than the water towers that are out there. There will be room for wildlife still to move around. There will be, you know, changes as things happen and as you get into engineering and design. And that's really where the next steps are, is that this serves as, you know, the framework for you to understand scale and proportion and what can fit out there, what fits together. And then, you have the survey to tell you, okay, here are perhaps some of the first-phase items that we could focus on in terms of trails, trailheads, ramadas, picnic tables, some of the things that people have said that they would most frequently use and that also luckily happened to be some of the cheaper park amenities as well, right? And so, I think that's where the next steps really lie, is that you have, you know, this roadmap in front of you now that you can use to go out and solicit grant funding, work into your annual budgets and then really advance into that design and engineering phase, go out for bidding and ultimately construct phases of the park that, again, may look a little bit different from what we showed here, but ultimately, now you have the vision for moving forward. So, thank you. With that, I'll turn it back over to Bobby.
I want to thank Daniel and Brian for presenting and putting together such amazing conceptual illustrative visual aids at this time. If council has any other questions for myself or our consultants, we'd love to answer them.
Council questions to Mayor?
So, I'm looking at this page right here and it says that we're going to be putting, doing an annual budget process to develop this. So, it's going to be out of, you know, our general fund is my assumption. And then, we'll be going out for a formal bid for somebody to run this because it's not, somebody has to work there. It's going, you're going to be paying to use this, so it's not like a free activity for our residents. Is that correct?
So, thank you so much for your question, ma'am, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council member. So, this is just kind of running through what next steps would be, making sure that we're allocating the funds. We will need to do that through the annual budget process to get approval from council, but also looking into grant funding and anything else that we can utilize to get the designs and the engineering completed. Talking about the formal bid packages for doing the engineering and design is what we're really highlighting right there, not looking at an operator for the park or for anything else other than the design elements to be able to move us forward in the process.
Yes, but the ropes course that will have to be manned, it's going to be, it's not a, you know, something you can just go use.
Yes, ma'am, you're absolutely correct. It'll either have to be manned through the town staff or there is absolutely a possibility for a public-private partnership for an operator to run it, there would be a fee associated with that. That'll be something else that we will have to hash out after we get through engineering, design and some of these other pieces.
And I was recently at a Granville meeting and a lot of the residents that were, there weren't a lot of residents present, but those were really concerned about preserving and conserving Glassford Hill. And they... preserving and conserving Glassford Hill. And they, they want to make sure that they're, they would rather see these things elsewhere. And the presenter said that maybe some of these things will be going to Fane Park. I thought, you know, is that something that you all are discussing? Or, because I heard that was spoken at Quailwood as well.
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, there's been no discussion or dialogue internally by staff for anything to move out to Fane Park pertaining to Glassford Dells, ropes courses, or anything else.
Okay. And I would, you know, if, if these are a priority in our community, which, based on the last survey that the community took, the, the priorities were open space acquisition for wildlife corridor and passive recreation. They wanted to see money spent on additional sidewalks and multi-use paths, such as, you know, viewpoint and connecting to the pronghorn community. They wanted to see business and retail attraction incentives, indoor aquatic center, and recreation center. Those were some of the priorities. So my concern is this is going to be expensive. I can see, you know, Jasper's not, Jasper's not set up for a bike lane, let alone all this additional traffic in Santa Fe. There's, I just think maybe we should focus on, you know, some shade structures, some trails, some, you know, the, the things that I'm, that are, that scored very high in these additional surveys. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman?
Bobby, so, one of the things that jumped out from the survey with the bar graphs was that, like the three different areas, each one you had three major high, high percentages. So it was like three, each one you had three big ones. And, and I think though, that should be where we should be headed right now, that we should try to, to fulfill those that are the most popular and the most wanted. And also, I think, is anyone, besides grants from, say, state or federal, is anyone trying to get corporate sponsorship on any of this stuff?
We haven't, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council member, we have not reached out for corporate sponsorships or things of that nature yet. Moving into that actual engineering design piece of things, we'll need that to, to have a little better understanding of how much things may cost and how we could have that relationship for that corporate sponsorship to make it work for both of us.
Yeah, I'd love to see if we could work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Just a kind of a quick thing. Have you guys reached out to the U of A Cooperative Extension? Because some of the things that are on here really do fall under them. You had master gardening, you know, you also have the Prescott Farmer's Market that would be kind of in their wheelhouse. Have we reached out to them for grant opportunities? Because that would take care of a lot of the funding.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council member, we've absolutely sat down and talked with the Cooperative Extension Office, talked about possibilities, opportunities, future things that we can collaborate on. And this was one of our discussion topics. So we have contacted them.
I think it would show a good partnership between both sides of the mountain.
I absolutely agree.
Vice Mayor?
Bobby, I just want to clear up a lot of confusion that we, we've seen. This is conceptual, meaning this is just a plan, nothing is set in stone. What we see is maybe not even going to happen as it's been already spoken about. So I want to be clear that nothing that you see on the screen is going to necessarily happen. It's all conceptual. It's, it's, it's basically, I look at it this way, it's a dream, it's a plan. We, we have to, if, if we want to proceed, council would have to budget and, and go from there, correct?
That is correct, sir. We will definitely have to budget for the project. This is our consultant giving us a high-level vision of what this area could be and being able to move us forward into an engineering phase and see what's actually going to be able to fit and how we can make it happen.
Councilman?
Two things. So one is on the, the watering hole, and that's below the height of the tanks that are there already. Is that correct for altitude-wise?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. And then the other thing is, I would love to see like a sledding hill, a minor sledding hill, not something for skiing or snowboarding. But there's so many kids that just love sledding, and I know that they go to random places around town, and some of them lead right into like roadways. So it would actually be behoove us if we could actually go up the mountain a little ways and create a, like a little area that when it does snow, we have the parking facility, we have a bathroom there, we have everything that could possibly really make that be outstanding. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, I would like to thank you and the team. You guys put a lot of work into this. I was at the Yavapai County Workforce Summit earlier today, and they were talking about workforce and people entering the workforce and families. And they were talking about diversity and different amenities that those individuals look for in a community. And I'm confident to say that there's probably not anyone out there that will 100% do every single thing that's laid out. And I'm going to say that, like, I'm not going to walk up Glassford Hill. You're never going to see me up there, folks. So, but there are things here that are really great, and you guys are able to balance. And what you have in the East Gateway is some really great active stuff for kids and families to do. And there's no doubt in my mind that those of us that have kids under the age of 16 will be out there every single day to try to do something that, that is out there. So that, that's great to hear. And it's also great to see that 79% of your community survey approved of it. 79% said, this is something that we're looking for in the East Gateway. That's perfect. It will work. Might not be for everybody, but it'll be good. And I know we've had challenges in the past where we've done surveys, and the people that run the surveys are able to go in there and say, actually, we looked at it and someone filled out the survey 57 times, and we're against something, or we're for something. So those aren't the best ones. And fortunately, we were able to get a statistically approved survey to show us what really people want, something for everybody. So, I think that's important. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, I was just going to say, I absolutely agree, and it was statistically valid survey, sir.
And this is just a blueprint, like the Vice Mayor said, something for the future, gives you and your team, future council, something to talk about. This isn't going to happen overnight, by any means. So...
Mayor, this will take a number of phases to be able to implement, so you are correct, sir.
Many, many years where many of us in this room won't be sitting on this dais or in this room or even employed with the town. So, I appreciate you, Councilman.
What is the closest park to Jasper?
The closest park to Jasper will be Santa Fe Station Park, ma'am.
Nothing else for Bobby and the team. Again, thank you. Next up, potential street bond discussion. Welcome, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Staff has begun discussing potential transportation projects to, to begin preparing for the town. The discussions were started based on recommendations made in the recently improved safety action plan. However, a review, a recent review of the town's current revenue obligation and the fiscal 20, fiscal year 26 budget indicate opportunity for, for budget capacity for a next round of transportation projects. So the safety action plan identified corridors of projects that were based on, based on factors such as crash data. But the town has also identified projects that are needed based on capacity, operations, and development. So the town has applied for federal grant funding for the projects that are listed in the safety action plan. We have not heard word back on that application yet. So with a little bit of an optimistic outlook, hoping for some funding there. We're still waiting on word for that. But with anticipated town funding, we wanted to start identifying projects and consider prioritizing those projects. And as we evaluate our, our various project programs, the presentation today is to show you what we consider when we start evaluating transportation projects, and it's being presented to you so that you can evaluate, and you'll be asked for input at future meetings. The project scopes shown here are very preliminary, and the next steps are also very general in nature, as the project scopes vary between the various types of projects. And you're going to see corridors of projects identified that can be broken down into individual smaller projects. But we also, we wanted to let you know what's in front of us and to get the council engaged. It's also not an exhausted, exhaustive list of projects. So as you, as you evaluate this and you see something else, or you want to identify anything else, make note of it, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss it at future meetings. So I have Parker here to walk you through the projects.
Welcome, Parker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Parker Murphy. I'm the traffic engineer for the town. As John said, we'll run through some of these projects. The first slide here is the overview of what we had in the safety action plan. So we had the top eight projects, and those eight projects were really a combination of a bunch of several different smaller projects that were kind of in the same vicinity or served the same purpose. That red outlined area that encompasses parts of 2, 4, 6, and 7 were kind of, that's the, that's the one we applied for that we haven't heard back for yet. And that was, you know, we, we chose that separately from the top eight, kind of on a different set of analyses that looked better on the scoring chart when we get to that, that kind of level. So that, that's why it was done that way. As we get through these, the safety action plan looked at 10 years of crash data from 2014 to 2023. And that's what we'll be looking at in the, as, as we kind of look at the, the other ones that we were proposing here. Again, this is the top eight that were proposed in the safety action plan. They, that one of the combination, the 2, 4, 6, and 7, that's the one we applied for, for a grant of 11.7 million. So the first one on our list here of consideration was the top, was in the ranked number three safety project in the safety action plan. It was the Robert Road from Tranquil to Roundup. And that would be widening it to a three-lane section, kind of give that turning lane for all the residences along that frontage, as well as improvements at the Long Mesa Drive and Roundup Drive intersections. This one has an estimated cost of 11.6 million, so very similar to the project that we applied for in this last go-around. The, that 2014 to 2023, it recorded that 74 crashes. A lot of those are at the major intersections. There are some segment crashes in there. And there, there was one fatal, too serious, and a 21 minor and possible injuries. This is where, as John stated, we kind of looked at other, not fully out of the safety action plan, but a lot of capacity and kind of request-based projects that we look at. This is Florentine between Yavapai, really Windsong and Navajo, where right now, there's a lot of pedestrian demand there in the section that has no sidewalk. And I don't, you know, I drive down this frequently, there's always someone walking on the shoulder or basically in the ditch on that south side. And these are things that we want to look at that might not show up in a safety analysis, because people are off the road, they're not getting hit, you know, it's low speed. So we don't see that safety concern in data, but we see it in observation. The, the Windsong Florentine and Robert Florentine were at, at those intersections, as signalized intersections usually show up in a top 10 for safety. You get people, you know, running red lights, you know, turning in front of other vehicles. Those are going to show up. But this project was really focused on the connectivity, pedestrian connectivity adding Another unranked project that showed up in our list was kind of this downtown area between Pav, on Paveway between Glassford and Lake Valley. This, again, was more pedestrian-focused. It's a little bit older infrastructure there, where we don't have ADA compliant ramps and sidewalks. There's also older pavement there that would benefit from a, a full reconstruction. The, I believe Paveway and Frontage are also a little bit wider for the section, especially, you know, around the Harkins. It's really wide, and so we have opportunity to look at the cross-section of that, you know. It, should it be, right now, it's only two lanes. Should it be a three-lane section to provide us that two-way center left to separate that This is kind of a general project. The, the image is, you know, of just kind of a typical neighborhood in, in Prescott Valley where we don't have curb gutter sidewalk. So it's very similar to the Florentine cross-section that we were talking about. This kind of estimable of, that $7 million per mile, we have 128 miles of this type of roadway. So this is not going to be a one-time thing. This is going to be a continuous kind of tackling around town. And it would be to, you know, reconstruct the road, get rid of that chip seal native that we see in a lot of these locations, and add that curb gutter and sidewalk for pedestrian safety. No, this is one-
Parker, can you just go back for one second? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And just confirming, it's $7 million per mile?
Per mile.
So we come up with a billion dollars roughly, just under that, we can put sidewalks everywhere?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yeah, like I said, it's could be a slow process to get everything up to where we want it. This is the Jasper, so the New Jasper Connection has raised some, you know, it's allowed us to observe traffic at this area as the ever, other improvements were made. We've seen some need for more improvements. Now, that's at the 69, which would have to be coordinated with ADOT as well, and our intersection at the Copper Hill. Now, if you guys have driven through there, I'm sure you know the bump, that's getting fixed. This is not focusing on that. So that, that 5 to 8 million range is not to just fix the bump, that is to fix the movements around that intersection and make it better. We just had a report come in for the Jasper expansion, looking at the new traffic that's going through here. Now, the wording here is a little bit vague, because there's a lot of different options that could happen here to kind of mitigate these. And so that's why it's kind of a lane improvement, signal improvements. But that 5 to 8 million range would potentially include the, the widening of Jasper between SR 69 and Copper Hill, the widening north a bit to increase the capacity of that area. But until Jasper's fully widened, it would still be two lanes to the north. Again, this is the project that 2, 4, 6, and 7 that we applied for, for that 11.7 million dollars about. As John said, we were supposed to hear back in late September. We still haven't heard anything back from FHWA on this. They haven't released anything yet, or so it's not, we didn't hear anything because we didn't win, we just haven't heard back because they haven't told anyone anything. This last slide, I just kind of want to lay out the next steps that we see with this discussion. And we're hoping to select some of these projects or any projects that the council has in mind for us that totals less than $30 million. As part of that process, we'll have to select designing consultants to put together DCRs, which are design concept reports, to just, you know, understand the feasibility of some of these improvements and, and the route to go. And then that would move into design. One of the major things that we want to hit is the staffing constraints we have in Public Works. Right now, we have all of those projects coming up. So the Glassford Field Expansion, that's from the Long Look to 89A. We have the cattle track pedestrian improvements, Lakesport Drainage, the potential aquatic and recreation center, the Fairground Reimagine, all of that. So with that, I'll open it up for some questions on the street bond.
So we have questions or comments for Parker?
I see that there's a lot of north-south thoroughfares that are being improved. I, I don't think I saw anything about east-west, and that, and I think we all know that east-west crossing the town is very difficult. And I'm not saying that we need to drop all these projects and, and start and just do that. But I think we also need to be looking for a long-term plan on how to, to best, you know, initiate improvements in east-west travel. It's, it's a big bottleneck here in town. You know, you have 69 and 89A, and in between there's, there's not much good access across town. So I'd, I'd like to see a long-term plan developed for that.
I think one of the important things, and I've said this many times, it's between Yavapai and Navajo on Florentine. You showed it as unranked. Totally understandable why it's not, if anyone's ever been on there. Pedestrians, they definitely get off the road, cars aren't traveling very fast. But if we were able to improve that, add sidewalks, do whatever with the road, we would actually pretty much- we would actually pretty much have a complete sidewalk system going from the furthest east of town by Grizzly Path, I believe. That's probably where the sidewalk begins all the way to Prescott East Highway. And that would be great, great for all of our residents. And it'd be the first one, I think, we would have. I think that's definitely something that should be considered. And then with the Robert Road north of Tranquil, we obviously have very big concerns with drainage that happens around. This would improve that, right? That would help all, if that road was to be built the way you were describing, that would improve the drainage situation for a lot of folks over there?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So I want to go back, the unranked was if it appeared in the safety action plan. That's not staff saying unranked, it's just it wasn't in the safety action plan. And for Robert Road, yeah, so that would include the widening and underground of all the drainage. So that's why that is, I think, is 11.6, it has that high price tag because it's a lot of work on the outside.
This is the last time we did work, and I see Ryan out in the audience. When we widened Robert Road, I believe it was from 69 up to that point, and I think that might have been 20 years ago. I'm not sure, but it's been a long time since I've ever, okay, I'm getting a head nod that a little higher. So it's definitely needed out there. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, there's no doubt about that. So we hear it all the time, sidewalks is huge. And then seeing how much they cost per mile is scary to be able to, I mean, we could, councils for the next 50 years could be handling sidewalks in Prescott Valley. I think what we definitely need to be focusing on is those safety plans or the safety ones that are showing up on the reports of having issues, and we definitely need to address that. So I don't know if you were looking for a specific project or if this is something that needs to come back at a later time, maybe during the council retreat, where council has the opportunity to speak or consider more options.
Yes, Mayor. That's kind of, we just kind of wanted to come to you guys and let you know food for thought as you look at next year's budget. And in the packet as well, it wasn't included in the presentation, but we included the unit costs that were estimated by the safety action plan that developed those numbers that were used in the presentation. So we just wanted to give this to you guys, get your input as we move forward with not only the safety, but the capacity and operations projects that we're looking at.
Gotcha. And even if we, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that's exactly right. We want to tee this up, get you kind of thinking about it. And then at the budget study session, we can kind of drill in a little bit more. That's gonna be late January where we can start to think about, are there any projects that we want to really begin to advance? There's a lot of engineering work that has to be done, the design concept reports before we actually advance those things. We'll also want to think about the timing if we were to do a bond. So again, this was a bond that was issued over 20 years ago that is gonna be paid off. And so it's an opportunity where we can reissue a new bond and do some new types of projects. We want to time that once that funding capacity is available.
And even if we approve something today, you start tomorrow, we're still looking at about two years out before anything's even done, correct?
Yeah, I mean, depends. We could go do small stuff, but some of these bigger ones, yeah, we do need those DCRs, especially when we get into the drainage concerns. It's how do we deal with that? And how do we tie into our existing infrastructure? How do we, you know, that whole mess?
Thank you, Parker. Councilman?
On prioritizing the projects, I think in addition to going by crashes, which is, of course, a significant indicator of need. But I think we should also, to get the most bang for our buck, try to prioritize the roads that have the most vehicle trips per day. If we could, you know, put the little rubber strip out and have a count for each project area and say, all right, this one has more than the other and so, and prioritize it based on the number of people that'll be affected, their journey will be improved by it. Also, on the same vein, in order to get out ahead of some of these things, I think it would be great if we could have a council retreat twice a year instead of once a year. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I think it would be nice to, so we, there wouldn't be such a time delay between these things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Parker. And are you just teed up for the next one?
Yep.
All right, go ahead. Traffic calming guidelines presentation.
Hello again. It's Ken, Parker Murphy, traffic engineer. I wanted to talk about traffic calming. Now, traffic calming is something that engineering deals with, PD deals with, and kind of, this presentation is going over kind of what we've been hearing from residents, how we've been dealing with it, and kind of putting together a process so that we, as a town, know how to address these concerns. These first few slides are kind of some background. So town population has more than doubled in the last 20 years. And Mayor, you noted, there's been some improvements 20 years ago. So a lot of that stuff we're still living with. That census and our general plan estimate is kind of steady around that 2% per year for resident growth. We also have several residential roadways operating or classified as collectors arterials. We have our Robert Road, we have our viewpoint. We'll also get into actual speed versus speed differential and speed perception, especially with traffic volume growth. That speed perception can be a big part of the kind of the complaints and concerns we get from residents. This last little note, in our safety action plan, 61% of the respondents to our surveys did note high vehicle speeds in their top six concerns. And that includes all roadways, so not just local residential. This is people talking about high speeds on Glassford Hill as well. And kind of to your point, councilmember Fines, this is 20 years ago. This was our roadway network, roadway network 20 years ago, where Glassford Hill went up to Long Look and kind of just had a spur off. But even here, we have no east-west connection. And this is kind of what we've built on over the last, you know, 20 years. We go back even further, we see a very similar picture with the east-west connection. Some other notes, you know, there's no 89A in this picture. You know, Glassford Hill was only two lanes, no Lake Shore Drive, Civic Center did not exist. And like I said, no east-west non-residential connectors except for that Sunset Florentine. And we get to today, this is the most recent aerial we could get, so summer of 2025, so just not too long ago. Now, we have all this other east-west connection on the extreme north and south of this, of the town, but nothing in between. We do have the new viewpoint, which is another north-south only. And we still have those same east-west deficiencies and that limited alternative routing. And again, just kind of highlight what our roadway network is. This is from our general plan. We can see our only collectors arterials east-west, except for that Florentine still, are residential roadways. So we have our Long Look that has direct residential frontage, loose direct residential frontage, Spouse and Manly, all direct residential frontage. So that kind of spurred, you know, along with the requests that we've been getting, the conversations we've been having with neighborhoods and HOAs, is to streamline and standardize some sort of traffic calming, traffic investigation process. Now, working with Chief and Assistant Chief Edelson on like data-driven requests, we've been collecting a lot of data in neighborhoods and responding to these requests to kind of get a feel of what we're actually seeing out there based on how it's being perceived. This guideline that we presented that was also included in the packet as the full draft is based on a lot of different other agencies in Arizona and kind of how, from an engineering perspective, do we deal with traffic calming? And so very similar to all those other ones, this is a resident and neighborhood-driven process. So here, there's some excerpts from the document that we provided about how residents would go about and kind of request. Now, we'll still take calls, we'll still answer your phone calls and everything and have a chat over the phone. But one of the biggest things we see in my experience at other agencies with traffic calming is having a resident-led program not only eliminates just calling the town or calling PD, you know, every day until you feel like you've been, feel like you're satisfied with the answer. It also provides some sort of community policing effect. If I show up to your door with a petition to investigate traffic in my neighborhood, you might start driving a little slower if you might think you're the culprit. Now, some of the text there is really small, but the pictures there show different devices and tools that we have in our traffic, you know, traffic calming toolbox. Now, in order, it's kind of from least expensive to most expensive, where we see lane markings. And lane markings can be a huge tool that we've even used here recently to narrow up lanes through neighborhoods, provide delineation for two-way traffic, especially when you have some tighter neighborhoods that people are parking on the side of the street. You know, it kind of helps people say, okay, I'll make sure you drive on the right side of the road, not blaze down the middle. These, some tools can be used on every road. Some tools are not really great for arterials and collectors, which goes back to some of our neighborhood roadways are arterials and are collectors. So we need to be very careful about what devices we use and where because it has a huge impact on not just the residents, but all the other traffic. There's also room for some temporary options. Now, if we go out and we identify through the process, you know, we go in and collect the data, we look at the speed, maybe it doesn't really warrant any of these tools. Say, well, okay, we'll work with law enforcement, you know, PD to do some targeted enforcement. We also have speed feedback trailers and speed feedback signs, similar to that second picture up there. You know, post those in places for a short time or extend the periods of time on a rotation. I did want to note is not only just classification and use, it's also when we get into a lot of our local roadways, as I mentioned in the last presentation, is we have chip seal on native. We're putting in certain devices, doesn't really work on that type of pavement section. It puts more stress on the existing pavement section. Now, we're looking at the cost for not, you know, putting in some sort of device if it's warranted, but also dealing with the existing infrastructure that we have. This is a long list of pros and cons. Basically, pros, it can help lower speeds. Cons, some people, it doesn't matter how hard you try, are gonna go as fast as they possibly can, as long as they possibly can. One of the big cons there at the end of the list is the snowplow operations. When we get into physical devices on the roadway, it can really hinder our snow clearing because now you're either hitting it and you cause more repairs, not maybe on the road, but to our equipment. And I will open it up for questions.
So we have questions or comments for Parker? Parker, Chief, it's a tough job, right? You're always gonna hear speeders are in so-and-so's neighborhood, and it's always difficult to figure out what to do to fix it. I know in the past, multiple times, we've had extra patrols. We've gotten a lot of complaints. Chief, you deploy a lot of extra patrols out there for speeders, and time in, time out, the people getting pulled over are sometimes even the ones that were complaining about speeders. So it's a double-edged sword, and it really comes down to being a good neighbor. And I really wish everyone could be out there and just drive the speed limit, but that's not gonna happen, and there's not a real clear answer to how to fix this. It's not speed bumps on every, there are speed tables or speed bumps on every street. We've seen that before where we've deployed speed bumps, and then the people that wanted the speed bumps didn't like the noise that the cars made when they drove over the speed bumps. So it was always a challenge, and your job is not easy, Parker. So appreciate what you guys do, Chief, appreciate what the officers do.
Yeah, I do want to note, we have a great relationship when it comes to this. You know, looking at it, you know, and I think Chief has been up here several times about the three Es. So it's education, enforcement, and engineering. And it's, we're all trying to work together to make everything safer, make everyone happy, but do it in the right way.
And one last question. How many speed trailers do we have? And how many of the signs that can go on, like a street sign that show the speed limit? Do we know that?
Two trailers. Two trailers that PD operates, and then we have four signs. Two of them are permanently on Glassford Hill. So one south of Florentine and one, I think, north of Lake Shore or north of Long Look. I think it's Lake Shore.
And Chief, are the speed trailers, are they constantly out and deployed? So if a resident wants them on, they can just call in the traffic, get put on the list, and then eventually one will make it out to their area.
And Public Works, Mayor, we've also investigated some other radar devices that can hook up to our existing message boards. So like our construction message boards, there's add-ons that basically make it work like a speed trailer, and it's a low-cost solution for now. As we move forward with this process, there might be some requests for additional funding for some of these because our sign budget that we use for maintenance of all signs and new signs, when we get into speed feedback signs and, you know, flashing lights, whenever, whatever that is, you know, the, even a simple solution for what we did out at Jasper Parkway for the Summit Trail recently, those signs can get up there and really impact that, you know, combined maintenance sign budget.
Great, I just think that's something we definitely need to look into as a council if we need to invest more money for more deployment out in the neighborhoods. So maybe it just comes down to awareness and getting those signs and the speed trailers definitely help, so.
Education is really the first step.